Get started in a few minutes here. You can talk, that's fine, you're there fine.
Two-minute warning.
Yep. Appreciate everybody coming, and so let's go ahead and get started with the agenda. So let's please stand for prayer and pledge allegiance on the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this glorious day. We thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon Talbot County, all of our citizens, all of our state and nation and world. We just thank you for a wonderful upcoming harvest here. Thank you for your provision, thank you for your protection, and just we thank you for being the loving, wonderful, merciful God that you are. In Jesus' most precious and holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody coming tonight. Okay, start off with the agenda. It's been before the council. As council, is there any changes or additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, the agenda is accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next is on the minutes. The council's had time to look over the minutes of July 23rd. Is there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is the dispersments of September 3rd and the 10th. Council's had a chance to take a look at it. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, starting off tonight on the agenda, it's a certificate of the, for the Star Democrat for 225 years of anniversary, so if you guys want to come on up, that'd be great. If you want to sit down, that'd be great. You'd look good for 225. Yeah, how you doing? You want to introduce yourself?
I'm Jim Johnson, I'm the executive editor of the Star Democrat.
Yes, sir.
And happy to be here.
Well, that's great. We're happy to have you, and I can tell you that Connor has done a fabulous job for us in the last couple of months, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're happy to have you here. So council, if you want to say a few words? Yep?
Yeah, it's just been great working with the Star Democrat and Jim certainly, and all that you do in the community. Congratulations on this celebration and hope to attend the get-together at the Avalon.
Great, thank you.
Yep, yep.
The Star Democrat has such a long and rich history, and it's good to see you all carrying on the good works over all those years. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll echo that by saying that when asked, I tell people that the Star Democrat is a vital community institution and encourage those to subscribe, to use this important resource and so that it can continue to service for yet another century. Thank you for your service to the community.
And if I'm doing my math right, that tells me that our country was only 23-years-old when you guys started.
That is correct. John Adams was the president when our newspaper was founded.
Love it, so one heck of a tradition here in town, and glad to hear again, I'll echo, you know, Connor's, you've been here, done great Veronica as well, I mean, it's been nice having them here and being a part of our meetings, but yeah, all great things.
Thanks.
And I'll say what my colleague said too, we really appreciate you providing that service for us in here and all the people that have been in here like Connor and the past people that have done a great job, you know, so we really appreciate the effort of you supplying us, somebody that can get the word out and be transparent, really appreciate it.
Thank you. One of the things I like to say is, we're not just a newspaper, we're a community builder, and that is our role in the community, is to build this community and report on what our community does.
That's for sure, that's great.
Okay, so we got, we got to work.
Can you have Susan read it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. Certificate of recognition from the County Council of Talbot County, whereas on August 21st, 2024, the Star Democrat Newspaper in Easton celebrated its 225th anniversary of publication, and when the first edition rolled off the press in 1799, John Adams was President of the United States and George Washington was still alive and living on his plantation at Mount Vernon. And whereas the Star Democrat, which adopted its current name in 1896, was also known in its early years by other names including the Republican, the Star, the Republican Star, and Eastern Shore Political Luminary, and has always been a staunch supporter of Jeffersonian democracy. The newspaper's original philosophy of individual liberty, local autonomy, autonomy, and limited central government continues to this day. And whereas in August 1974, the Star Democrat expanded from a weekly newspaper to a regional weekday newspaper. In October 1988, a Sunday edition was added, and in 1996, the newspaper launched its website, stardem.com. And whereas throughout its history, the Star Democrat has seen the nation survive the Great Depression and thrive through numerous wars. Its offices and equipment have been twice destroyed in fires and once wrecked by a mob of vandals, and one of its editors was arrested and exiled by federal troops during the Civil War. Through it all, the newspaper has persevered. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby bestow upon the Star Democrat this certificate of recognition in tribute to one of the oldest newspapers in the United States, which along with its predecessors has served the citizens of Talbot County and the surrounding area for two and one-quarter centuries. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 10th day of September in the year of our Lord 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in second to go and approve the, as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Right, you want to come on up?
We know this will be a paper.
Front page, right Jim?
Now that's news. Okay, next on the agenda is a proclamation of the Constitution and Citizenship Week. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that proclamation into the record, please? That'd be great.
Proclamation, Constitution and Citizenship Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2024. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas, September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia on September 17th, 1787, which set our country on a bold course toward forming a more perfect union. John Adams called the drafting of the Constitution, quote, "The greatest single effort of national deliberation that the world has ever seen," end quote. And since its ratification, this exceptional document has remained the bedrock of the rule of law for our nation. And whereas, the founders understood that a governing, self-governing republic requires a free and empowered citizenry. Through a system of limited government and checks and balances, the Constitution limits the ability of the state to become an obstacle to human flourishing while simultaneously enabling the state to serve order, protect rights, and provide public goods. And whereas, the drafters of our Constitution were committed not to a king or a government, but to a belief in the promise of America as a free and prosperous society. To fulfill that promise, they designed a government and a constitution that could withstand the inevitable demagoguery, passions, and existences that would seek to unmake us as a people. And whereas, though the durability of our Constitution has been tested through crises and wars, it has endured, and it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this important document on its anniversary. And whereas, Public Law 108477 requires that every educational institution which receives federal funds to hold a program on the Constitution for students on September 17th. And whereas, since 1956, September 17th through September 23rd of each year has been proclaimed Constitution Week, encouraging all citizens of the United States to support and reaffirm the freedoms and liberties guaranteed by the Constitution. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2024, Constitution and Citizenship Week in Talbot County, and urge citizens to study the Constitution and to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege entails, and to protect the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 10th day of September in the year of our Lord 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Take it.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and approve the proclamation as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, do we, we have a couple people up here want to come on up? Yes, sir, come on up, you can have a seat, tell us a little bit about. Yeah, hey, how are you? Good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
I'm Michelle Ewing.
Okay.
Julie Quick and I are co-directors of the Constitution Alliance, and thank you for having us here today, as well as the proclamation for this week.
Yeah.
Dr. Joseph Crudom with Washington College, the, let's see, Institute for Religion, Politics, and Culture, as well as Terrence Bailey with the Operation Frederick Douglass on the Hill are hosting this coming Tuesday at the Art Academy, our Journey to Liberty and Freedom. It's our third annual celebration.
That's great.
And we have a couple of actors coming in for the day, and we also will be welcoming in new U.S. citizens in Talbot County who've achieved citizenship credentials. And Joseph, would you like to say anything?
Well, I would just say that the actors are world-renowned historical interpreters, first of Thomas Jefferson and second of Frederick Douglass, and the historical interpreter of Thomas Jefferson will read from our treasured document, the Declaration of Independence, and then our reenactor for Frederick Douglass will talk about the importance of making sure that that document rings true for all in the land.
That's great, that's, okay, thank you.
No, I just, what day did you say that was on?
It will be on Tuesday, September 17th, at noon at the Art Academy. We invite everyone here, it should be in the newspaper, it should be around town, it should be in the attraction magazine.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in and certainly appreciate your work with the Alliance.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to thank you. As a graduate of Washington College with a degree in American Studies, I truly appreciate the work that you do and commemorating the Constitution and its importance, and I don't think it can be stressed enough, and sometimes I don't think it is, in education and how important this, the understanding the Constitution and what it's done for our country and our citizens, so thank you for this.
Thank you.
Well, it seems fitting and proper for a body of elected officials who are sworn to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States to be able to highlight this upcoming occasion, and I look forward to participating and seeing you on Tuesday 17th, as we celebrate the power derived from, in this orderly fashion, from we, the people.
Yep. This is just wonderful. I mean, it's a pleasure to recognize you guys again, and I just want to go back to the proclamation here itself and just repeat a few things that just stand out, right? Whereas the founders understood that a self-governing republic requires a free and empowered citizenry, I just want everyone to, you just think about that for a moment, and this is, this is all of our government. It's not the five of us sitting up here, it's not our government, it's everyone's, and that's just such a powerful line in this. And also just want to reach, read down here in the bottom, urge citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege entails, and to protect the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. I mean, what powerful words, I mean, it sounds like the Constitution itself, it's just, it's beautiful, it's beautiful. Thank you for being here, thank you for all what you're doing, thank you for bringing this to light, making sure everyone knows that this is their republic, this is their government.
Yep.
Thank you, I'd just like to add that in addition to the September 17th event, these same actors will be heading to St. Michael's Middle and High School on the 18th, and will be performing for the entire student body, high school student body, so over 250 children, as well as faculty. So we've got a twofer this year, the last couple of years have been on the courthouse lawn, and this year we decided to keep them an extra day and try to get them into the school system, and it's happening.
Love it, that's great. Well, we appreciate everything you guys have done, and I tell you what can be powerful, if Terrence Bailey could smile out there, we'd be great. There you go, there you go, that's powerful, you know, there you go, well, we appreciate everything, so we have something for you. Okay, that was great, okay. So next on the agenda is an update, Midshore Behavioral Health, you guys want to come on up? How you guys doing?
We're good.
Good, good, good.
Good to see everyone.
Everybody healthy? Everybody healthy? Everybody healthy?
Thank you for your patience.
No problem, no problem, okay.
Sorry for the delay.
Hey, no problem, no problem, that's not a problem, so I'll just hand it over to you.
Sure.
And, yeah.
So, good evening, everyone, my name is Katie Dilly, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Chief Executive Officer at Midshore Behavioral Health. We are the regional core service agency serving the five counties here in the Midshore. I'm going to let Shannon introduce herself.
Good evening, my name is Shannon Joyce, I'm the Behavioral Health Coordinator of PASR and Aging Supervisor, it's nice to be with you all this evening.
And Shannon also represents Talbot County as her county of focus, as part of her responsibilities with Midshore. So this presentation is really our annual update to you all on some highlights from the past year and some current activities that are going on as we speak, but I do want to just acknowledge that we are in a really exciting month. There are two very important initiatives being recognized in the month of September. We have our National Recovery Month actively happening, as you know, with our Talbot Goes Purple Initiative. It's a very engaged and exciting time, and certainly very critical to acknowledge all the work and need and support for our community struggling with substance use in their families. So that month is recognized during September in addition to Suicide Prevention Month, so both are extremely important initiatives, and our organization is involved with promoting and being involved with getting the word out and recognizing these two very important causes. And today is a very significant day because it's actually World Suicide Prevention Day, that's September 10th, so it's kind of serendipitous that we ended up presenting to you today, a little delayed, but we are here, and a very special day to be presenting to you all, so thank you. So we have prepared our annual update, we're just going to pull out a few highlights, and if you have any questions for us, we're happy to take them at the conclusion of our presentation or as we go.
Okay.
So we have been working since fiscal year 21 as a core service agency to do some formal integrated initiatives and planning for behavioral health services in the region with all of the five health departments in the region. There are a couple of our health departments that we are more formally integrated with, taking on some of the local Addictions Authority responsibilities, but here in Talbot County, we are still doing our annual planning and collaborating with Sarah Cloxton and her leadership, and Dr. Maria McGuire and her leadership, so we are with collaborative organizations, definitely doing all of our planning and needs assessments for the behavioral health needs of our residents here in Talbot County. A couple of larger initiatives that are happening nationwide as well as here on a systems level in the state, one of the larger initiatives nationally is the work around promoting 988, which is the National Suicide Prevention Hotline. The National Awareness Day for that was actually September 8th, so just over the weekend. We have several contracts that we're managing out of Midshore Behavioral Health to fund the regional hotline here on the eastern shore that is supporting some 988 phone call functions. And most recently, we have started doing some formal organizing with our 911 centers, not just in Talbot County, in the midshore, but we're actually working with all of the eight or nine counties, depending on how you define the shore, to work with our 911 centers to make sure that there are procedures in place to do a warm handoff process if someone happens to call 911, and it's more appropriate to be a 988 phone call for behavioral health and mental health supports, and then of course, to have mobile crisis dispatched if needed. So that's a formal process we're working on right now to really come up with a protocol that works for the community and our 911 centers and our emergency responders to make sure that we are capturing and supporting anybody that's coming through by way of that 988 hotline. Related to crisis services, the state is moving in the direction of making some of our services that are provided or have been provided traditionally under grant funds to move into a fee-for-service model. For our region, the one service that is actively moving into a fee-for-service structure is our mobile crisis teams. Currently in this fiscal year, we have preserved all of our grant dollars to support affiliated Sante Group and their mobile crisis response services, and we are working to get them licensed and accredited and staffed up to meet the requirements to be able to move to fee-for-service. As you can imagine, in a rural community, this is an area that we're going to be doing a lot of advocacy around because we don't necessarily have the same volume of phone calls that a higher, you know, higher-density urban jurisdiction would have, so we're making sure that we advocate to have grant funds to support our provider because we are concerned that fee-for-service would not necessarily maintain that because there's just not the same volume of calls that are coming in. So that's something that perhaps, if needed, we may ask for your support for some advocacy down the road because we certainly don't want to see anything come out of our resources here in the community, we want to preserve them to the fullest. We are continuing and very actively and eagerly awaiting the response from SAMPA for the State Opioid Response Grant, this is the fourth installment of this grant. We have governed the dollars for the eastern shore, primarily we've applied on behalf of all nine counties since the inception of this award several years ago. Here in Talbot County, this year, we're hoping to get some additional funding for some recovery house supports, as well as funding to support an additional installment of a safe station model here in the county. I know we've tried various models over the last several years, I think since 2016, to really establish a safe station here in the county. We are working and hoping to get some grant dollars to have that more formally staffed up with peer support specialists here in the county. So hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have good news, that's when the award is anticipated to be announced. This award has historically supported our 12 crisis beds for substance use up at the AF Witsit Center in Kent County, in addition to three other safe stations on the eastern shore, recovery houses, and some harm reduction, regional coordination as well. One thing that's very exciting that within the last year we've supported in partnership with Channel Marker is the development of a suicide prevention coalition for the midshore. We had not had a formal group gathering here on the midshore. We looked to some peer support and technical assistance from our three lower-shore counties who have had a very active suicide prevention coalition for several years in place to help provide us with some guidance on how to get that established here in the region. We have successfully launched that, we meet once a month, on the last Tuesday of the month at 3:00 PM at our office here in Easton, so anyone who is interested here this evening or publicly that's tuning in, please reach out to Midshore, we are welcoming any community participant to be a part of this coalition, we really want to have engagement, and it's just a real strength, and it's a need for our community to have this coalition. I know that several of you have, over the years, been supportive of the work to expand and sustain services at the AF Witsit. I know that several of you have, over the years, been supportive of the work to expand and sustain services at the AF Witzit Center. So I just want to take the moment to thank you for your support and your visibility in that process. We are continuing to advocate to see if there are opportunities to continue to expand services, specifically looking at how we can serve our child and adolescent and young adults in the region. So there may be an opportunity in the near future that if I could come back and have a more specific presentation on that, we would really welcome the invitation.
By the way, Katie, is the Witzit Center, they got some more money?
Not officially.
Not officially?
It's in process potentially.
Okay, is any of it open yet? Or is it, no?
Well, the Witzit Center itself is operational.
Okay, I got you.
And then, of course, through the State Opioid Response Grant, we fund twelve additional beds there specifically for crisis beds for individuals with either using stimulants or opiates as their primary. And those services have been sustained.
Okay, that's great.
The hope is to look at how to expand services in the vacant space there that used to be housed by the Carter Center,
Yeah, okay.
which has been vacant since 2020, actually November of 2020.
I'm with you.
That, there are a couple things in motion that may require some more community involvement with how it can be achieved. And so without that being confirmed, I don't want to necessarily say it's happening, but we're certainly trying to figure out a way to get some resources for the infrastructure needs because the facility needs support with some remodeling, as well as resources to support a provider to come in and do those services.
Okay, great, I appreciate that.
And if anything requires your support, I will come and make sure to have a special presentation on that.
Please do, please do.
And thank you for your support and enthusiasm.
Oh, yeah.
So this year, we also were excited. I know we've done a lot of work and engagement in the community here in Talbot County around equity. We hosted our first Beyond Inclusion Conference, which we're hoping to make an annual event. We hosted this first installment up at Menary Stream Alliance in Kent County. And this was really a milestone to really bring behavioral health providers and engaged partners in our community around becoming an anti-racist organization and community that really prioritizes inclusion and equity and how we can, the theme this year was breaking down the intersection of anti-race, different roads to anti-racism. So this was really an honor to welcome that training conference to the community, and we hope to be able to bring it again, ideally in the month of February. That's the goal this year. And one of my last highlights, specific to our kind of regional, and then I'll let Shannon pick up and talk about a couple of Talbot-specific highlights. We have successfully gained support through the Consortium on Coordinated Community Supports to serve Talbot County as a pilot hub for the additional funding coming into the community to expand behavioral health services in our school systems. So that's been a really exciting and labor-intensive project that we're hoping to continue to have support through that grant and those funds. This is a part of the larger blueprint model, which I know most people have heard of that. The Consortium on Coordinated Community Supports is the segment of funding that has been earmarked out of the Blueprint Initiative specific to expanding behavioral health services in our schools. So Midshore is providing sort of the overarching organization and management of that initiative on behalf of four of our five counties currently, hoping to serve all five in this next round. But it's been a really exciting initiative to support, and I know working with the schools is something that we've done, not as formally historically, so this is a real milestone opportunity to have some of those barriers broken down where we're really working together to make sure we're meeting the needs of our student body and securing adequate behavioral health services in the schools. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Shannon to finish us out this evening. So thank you.
That's great. Welcome, Shannon.
So Midshore Behavioral Health, we continue to support the Behavioral Health Assistant Living Program. So we are currently at full capacity, which is serving six individuals who do have serious mental illness and need assistance with activities of daily living. We also continue to support the State Hospital Discharge Initiative. Now, last year, when we last met, we were at serving twenty-one individuals, and as of this morning, we're currently serving thirty-six individuals and hope to have that continue to rise in upcoming year. As far as continued Talbot County-specific highlights, Midshore Behavioral Health regularly attends and participates in the Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council, Talbot County Goes Purple, Shore Regional Health Opioid Task Force. And we actually do have the Going Purple event this Saturday as well for Midshore Behavioral Health, and we do welcome attendance in that as well. So a Midshore Behavioral Health Team member is also a co-chair of the Eldac and sits on the Opioid Fatality Review Committee. In addition, Midshore has supported the planning of the opioid restitution funding for Talbot County. So Katie has served as the Talbot County Family Network Local Management Board. A Midshore Behavioral Health KIAA Behavioral Health Coordinator supports an active leadership role with the local care team for the county and has supported multiple youth in the county with care team planning and supportive intervention arrangements. Midshore Behavioral Health sponsored and promoted the NAMI Walkshow Way Maryland. And September twenty-first at Idlerl Park is the next event for that, and it's from eight o'clock to eleven AM. Midshore Behavioral Health participated on the planning committee and sponsored the Out of Darkness Suicide Awareness Walk and continues to support annual planning for this event. Midshore has coordinated and facilitated Shore Regional Health, regional health meetings for high-risk behavioral health consumers who return to their communities. Midshore continues to support the leadership and active participation in Talbot County Mental Health Work Group. This was actually initiated in January of twenty-two to present day. Through this work group, a human services and social work recruitment flyer was created and can be used by any partner or organization in the community. Midshore Behavioral Health staff participation with the Talbot County Conversations on Race, which Katie had talked about a little bit earlier today as well. There are three current Midshore Team members who participate in the Talbot County Equity Coalition, which was initiated in spring of 2023. There's an established working relationship with current law enforcement and the Easton Police Department for gun lock trainings with law enforcement and first responders. Talbot County Public Library Gun Lock Distribution Initiatives also have recently begun. Midshore Behavioral Health regularly participates in the Talbot County Emergency Operation Plan Tabletop Exercises as they occur. And then Midshore Behavioral Health also partners with Rob Schmidt with TCPS and Mark Weiss to bring enhanced behavioral health and Midshore, Maryland's Eastern Shores Training to Easton. And this occurred in September of 2023, and sixty-one individuals attended. The Forensics Mental Health Program Manager and Case Manager work very closely throughout the year with the Talbot County Problem Solving Court to assist individuals identified within the justice community who struggle with behavioral health challenges and trauma. Talbot County Problem Solving Court celebrated three graduates in September of 2023, a graduate in December of 2023, and three more graduates in February of 2024. There were also two additional graduates in July of 2024. This program is currently working to obtain their own SCRAM unit, a twenty-four-seven continuous alcohol monitoring device, allowing for more precise testing for participants who struggle with alcohol use disorder. The program currently is updating and revising their policy and procedure manual to reflect nationally-recognized best practices. And we do have a couple of data points as well. So for Talbot County, through the public behavioral health system, there were seven hundred and twenty-one individuals served for substance use disorders, and then one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one individuals served for serious mental illness.
Okay, all right then. Thanks for that report. That's great.
That concludes our presentation.
Okay, that's great, okay. Mr. Stepp?
Just, I mean, I don't know how you follow all that. I mean, just thank you for everything that you guys do. I'll summarize it with just that. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, I've had the opportunity to see a little bit of the work that you do through the Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council, through the Conversations on Race, through the Problem Solving Court graduations. But what this shows is that's really just the tip of the iceberg for the breadth and the depth of your impact in this community. And you are certainly vital partners for us in moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do with a lot of the events that have been in the news lately. It's good to know that we have such a support system to help our residents, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I know that the services that you provide are critical to those on the eastern shore and in our community. So I just want to thank you for all that you do because I know it probably does tug at your heart, the hard work that you put in and the dedication to helping those in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for updating us and keeping us up to date. I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say too, is thanks for coming in here and updating us on and all this hard work that you're doing because it really means a lot to the community, to the community, and just the amount of people that you're helping and to recover and get back to health. So we really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
We have an action item on this?
Yep, yep, we have, we have, do we, we got a motion?
You want to list what the action item is?
Yeah, go ahead, Madam Secretary.
It's a, we're requesting a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty-five letter of agreement as presented by Midshore Behavioral Health this evening.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Okay. Okay, all right. Next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, we've got introductions to a number of resolutions. We got two of them. Could you go ahead and read the first one when you get a chance?
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real properties located at seven zero four four Bosman Nevet Road, Bosman, Maryland, shown on Tax Map Thirty-nine as parcel thirty-seven, and six nine nine zero Bosman Nevet Road, Bosman, Maryland, shown on Tax Map Thirty-nine as parcel one eleven, from unprogrammed to S-one immediate priority status.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. You want to come on up, Ray, and just briefly bring us up to date on this?
Counsel, we've received applications from these two property owners to reclassify their properties into the Compform Sewer Plan. Ultimately, we have the Bosman-Nevet sewer line that's currently being installed. They are along the route where we have the sewer line going from Bosman down to Nevet. We do have, I think it's parcel, Tax Map Thirty-nine, parcel one eleven, I think is owned by the French family that they have had Accurate Environmental go out and found that the septic system had failed back, I believe, in, let's say, December, or back in two thousand and twenty-one. We'll confirm with Environmental Health as to the failed septic systems for both properties. My understanding, the resolution does note that the systems do have failing septic systems. We'll make sure that that's confirmed by what the Office of Environmental Health, we are able to serve them as well, so.
Okay, all right, then. Okay, at this time, go ahead.
Mr. Clark, I know a lot of work, this was prior to my time on council, went into identifying the property subject to Resolution Two-Fifty to include that peninsula in priority one, or, I'm sorry, tier one for sewer service. And is there a reason why this property, which seems like it's a non-subdivisible property, it's already developed, it has, is there a reason why it hadn't already been identified?
Yeah, I think unfortunately, when the tier maps were made, we tried to establish the criteria that if you were, if you had, let's say, three acres on the water or less, that you, you know, we would look at you as a high priority. And then if you were two acres and off the water, you'd be another priority. We didn't really adhere to that in this remapping scenario. At the same time, we also run into certain conditions, like these are waterfront properties. And typically waterfront properties, the best draining soils are typically within the one-hundred-foot buffer area. So it then impacts, if they're going to have to replace the drain field, it would actually be in the buffer, that one-hundred-foot buffer. So these are things that, you know, we're learning as we go along. But that's another reason, I think, you know, we're looking at this, and ultimately, with both of these failing, one of the things I would say, they're probably ground-coupled in the sense that the drain field is actually connected to the groundwater system. And we've had properties in Bosman and Nevet that basically the groundwater is ten inches below the surface, and the septic tanks, let's say, twelve, the top of the septic tank is twelve inches below, so they're, the septic tank submerged as well, so.
And will inclusion, or will giving this immediate priority status, make this eligible for any funding we obtain under Resolution Two-Fifty for connection?
Probably not.
Probably not.
We would have to go through the OSDS program or a separate program with the MDE, so that's, we've attempted to do that with Resolution Two-Thirty-five, and we're, have been unsuccessful.
Okay, so the funding is really for those properties that are already identified under Resolution Two-Fifty, but not for additional ones like this?
Right, and ultimately, this resolution would have to go to MDE for their review and approval, and that would probably be the element of discussion with them on that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, counsel?
Who?
Okay, so it's introduction, so a raise of hands to support this?
To introduce it? Introduced by counsel?
Okay.
This will be known as Resolution Number Three-Sixty-Two. The public hearing will be on Tuesday, October eighth, at six-thirty PM.
Okay, great. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you read the next one, please?
A resolution concerning the proposed annexation by the Town of Easton, Maryland, the town of certain real property owned by Corrigan and Tripp Ventures LLC, located on the east side of Ocean Gateway, US Route Fifty, consisting of seventeen point three-two-nine plus or minus acres of land. Said property being more fully shown on Tax Map Thirty-four, Grid Twenty-four, as parcels one-twenty-eight and one-seventy-five collectively. The property finding that the property's proposed rezoning from Talbot County's Town Conservation TC zoning to the town's R-ten-A residential, R-ten-A zoning upon its annexation will result as substantially different uses or substantially higher density exceeding fifty percent than could be granted for proposed development under the county's TC zoning and waiving the five-year hold in accordance with Section Four dash four sixteen of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Ready, you want to come up and just briefly tell us about this piece of property?
Good evening, counsel. Brennan Tarleton, Director of Planning and Zoning for the record. The request before you from the Easton Town Council that's provided here is for the proposed annexation of the properties existing behind several properties, land along Ocean Gateway. I believe you all have an exhibit attached here too that was a revised exhibit depicting those properties a little bit more clearly than what was originally shown. But essentially, when there is an annexation of property, the differing zoning results in a substantially greater density or intensity of property than what is currently zoned under the county zoning authority, it requires a request of the five-year zoning hold from the county to the town to allow that zoning change to exist prior to the five-year hold, obviously. In this instance, we have properties that are zoned TC under the county's zoning designation that allows for and permits for one dwelling unit per two acres. Likewise, the town's R-ten-A zoning designation allows for three-point-five dwelling units per one acre with an affordability of additional flexibility and density of proposed, affordable units are included as part of that development project. My understanding is this is planned to be a planned unit development, which will exceed the density that is in the My understanding is this is planned to be a planned unit development, which will exceed the density that is in the R10A. But regardless, they're requesting the five-year zoning waiver for the R10A designation because it is in excess of the 50% allowable under our code, because it's greater than, 50% would essentially equate to one dwelling unit per one acre. So, here we're going from one dwelling unit per two acres to three and a half dwelling units per one acre.
So, so saying that, can you calculate what the total number would be of houses for me? Because you're doing pretty well here.
Give me one second.
Okay, no problem.
Pull out a calculator and I'll give you a number.
It don't have to be exact, just so everybody understands.
Just based on the property area, it looks like it's a total of about 17.329 acres, so, give or take closer to 50 to 60 units could be proposed in that area. Obviously, that's not an exact number because there are included environmental constraints. These properties are relatively heavily forested, so I'm sure there will be some environmental buffers included in that. And like I had indicated, and I think the town indicated in their letter to you all on July 25th, this is proposed to be submitted as a planned unit development to them in the future, which means they could be proposed at a larger density permissible on these properties. But under the current R10A zoning, that's what the density would afford the properties to be developed at today.
Yeah, I got you. And just help me out, so the access of that is across from the high school to come in on 50, right?
Yeah, I believe there's several points of the property that touch along Ocean Gateway. I don't know where the exact proposed entrance would be, but obviously, that would have to be approved and reviewed by State Highway Administration as well.
But it's behind those six or seven houses that are across. So, so people understand it's behind these houses, the woods behind these houses on 50?
Yes, there's, there's houses there and then, sorry, additional utility line there on the backside of that is some forested area that encompasses most of these parcels.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, counsel?
How does the Easton Town Conservation District read? Do we have that at all? I mean, is that like a protected zoning?
The Town Conservation District is actually a county zoning designation.
Okay.
Our Town Conservation District is essentially the areas zoned outside of the municipal boundary, but inside our Countryside Preservation District, which is viewed as kind of like the county's green belt for annexed properties that could be included into municipalities. So, that's kind of the threshold or the tier. As you go out of the municipality, you get into more of the Town Conservation Zone lands. And then the Countryside Preservation is there to follow. And then further out from that, you get into the Rural Conservation and Western Rural Conservation. And the densities obviously subsequently get lower in those zoning designations.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other?
The one thing that I found a little hard to sort out, and I think the revised exhibit is somewhat helpful in this, is to what extent, you know, the way Easton has annexed and developed over time, it's left not quite an island here because they're not allowed to leave an island anymore, but of, on annexed land. This is filling in some of that, some of that unannexed land next to Corbin Parkway.
Yes, that's correct. Much of that area, and I think, again, it's also noted in the town's letter to you all, much of that area is inclusive into our, the growth element of the comprehensive plan as either existing or designated as future growth residential area. So, this area or these properties zoned today as TC are actually designated to be future growth residential under the anticipation that they would essentially one day be annexed into the town or developed at a residential density within the county.
And following on, on Mr. Callahan's question, the access to this parcel, the sole public way that this is accessible from is Ocean Gateway Route 50. It's not accessible from Corbin Parkway. It's not accessible off of another spur from Dutchman's Lane or any other, any other thing that would provide further connectivity?
No, unfortunately, it doesn't appear that there's any connectivity to any existing subdivisions within the town or within the county based on where these properties exist today. There's a small area of development between Dutchman's and Ocean Gateway now. However, that lane, I believe, is a private lane, so it's not anticipated that this development would tie into that. So, it's likely that the access for any future development on this property would come directly from Route 50.
Well, that's, that's a nut for the town to crack.
Okay. So, I guess at this time, any other questions? Mr. Step? The other steps? Okay. Raise a hand of introducing?
Introduced by Step, Lusher, and Milkie?
Okay, all right.
This will be known as, this will be known as Resolution Number 363. And the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 8th at 6:30 p.m.
Okay, that's great. All right, thank you. All right, so, next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, is introduction of legislation.
A bill to address conditions of approval imposed by the Maryland Critical Area Commission, the CAC, for Bill Number 1544, a bill to amend Chapter 190 of the Talbot County Code, zoning subdivision and land development, Sections 190-25.2, table of land uses, 190-29, commercial uses, 190-29.7, inn, and 19078, terms defined regarding historic inns as enacted by the County Council of Talbot County on July 25th, 2023.
Okay, good job. All right, going to bring us through that one.
Yeah, good evening, counsel. I believe, I don't recall which meeting it was, I believe it may have been a June or July meeting. We discussed the proposed revisions here to the in-text language that were originally brought about and suggested by the Critical Area Commission in their initial review of Bill 1544. Based on their review and consideration of that bill, we have proposed and provided the amended changes as they had requested originally. Those were considered by the Critical Area Full Commission on August the 7th. At that meeting, they unanimously approved the amended, well, the amended language to be included into Bill 1544 with the direction to the county that we formally amend Bill 1544 to include the language that was proposed there. And I can read that language back to you if you'd like. Basically, just stipulates that inns located within the critical area are not permitted to utilize guest rooms within accessory structures that did not exist as of December 31st, 2023. Total lot coverage serving an inn within the critical area shall be limited to the lesser of 15% of the total acreage within the critical area or 20,000 square feet. That was determined to be a refinement to our critical area provisions within our code. And because they had stipulated as a condition that it be formally amended, it's now before you all to be included as an amendment to Bill 1544.
Got you. Okay. Questions?
Mr. Tarleton, the, the date that they, the cutoff date that the Critical Area Commission is proposing to introduce here is related simply to the time that this legislation was introduced, not to the time that these buildings were constructed, or there's no attempt to sort of backdate this a period because this is after all four historic inns. And so, you could actually pick a date that...
No, that is correct. So, this, this date was essentially set forth in here just to be inclusive of the date that the legislation was, was introduced. Essentially, it doesn't, it's not inclusive of or allows for any accepted structures that were constructed within this timeframe. My understanding is that the structures that are proposed to be utilized for the owner that has been in support of this amendment were constructed sometime in the early 2000s, I believe, between 2010 and 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay, let's go ahead and on this, raise a hand of introducing it.
Introduced by Callahan, Step, and Ms. Milkie, or Ms. Haye and Milkie?
Okay, okay. All righty. Okay, thank you. Good job. Next, no, start the, go ahead and start the public hearing.
I need to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
This will be known as Bill Number 1579, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 8th at 6:30 p.m.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, are we ready for the public hearing, Madam Secretary? Okay.
Bill Number 1578, a bill to amend Chapter 56, electrical standards of the Talbot County Code for the purposes of requiring electricians to obtain electrical permits from the Office of Permits and Inspections before performing certain electrical work, to delete outdated language, and to increase the amount for fines to be imposed for certain violations of Chapter 56, and to amend Chapter 58, enforcement of code, for the purpose of exempting Chapter 56 from the provisions thereof.
Okay, so, okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open it, the public hearing. And if anybody wants to speak, I'll give you three minutes. If you're representing a organization, I give you five. So, I'll start over here to my left. If anybody wants to come on up here and talk about 1578. Okay, anybody here over to my right, come on up and talk about 1578? Okay, all right, nobody wants to speak on that? That's good. All right, so, I guess at this time, it's, it's going to be eligible for vote for the next meeting.
Unless it's brought to third reader.
Unless it's brought to third reader. And how does counsel feel about bringing it?
Is there, is there any urgency to this, that this can't just go through our regular order?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Let's, let's let it follow the normal path.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, so, so at this time, we'll go ahead and I'll, I'll keep the public hearing open on that to the 24th. And we'll vote on it on the 24th. Okay, great. All right. All right, next up, we got our main man, Clay Stuff, okay? All right.
Good evening, counsel. Under County Manager Report this evening, I have a number of items for you under Boards and Committee Appointments. The first is the Administrative Charging Committee requesting the reappointment of Constance Hope to that committee.
I'll move for the reappointment of Constance Hope.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay.
And next is the Tourism Board requesting the reappointment of Kristen Greenaway from the Chesapeake, Chesapeake Bay Maritime Museum to, to be reappointed to that committee.
I'll, I'll move the appointment, second.
And we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Ray and Dana if you'd like to come up. We have the Department of Public Works working with the Talbot County Free Library. They're requesting council approval to award Bates Moving and Storage Company Incorporated the moving and storage contract for the St. Michael's Library branch in the amount of $100,993, while the St. Michael's Library branch is under renovation. There are sufficient funds in the FY25 budget for this expense. And Ray Clark and Dana Newman are here to add any additional information or answer questions relative to this.
Counsel, any, any questions or?
Ray, you want to?
I can, real quickly, again, this is to assist the library in moving their materials in the St. Michael's Library as well as storage for that. One of the things I know, Scotty Oliver from the library did most of the work on getting all the, getting the proposal and whatnot and setting up the scope. We're just, I'm just assisting as I can with the library on this matter, but see, no problem.
You're, you're ready?
Yeah, so, I would just say that Bates has a lot of experience with moving library collections. They've done a number of libraries on the eastern shore as well as media centers. And they have a special way of packing up library materials so that it's kept in order and that it's stored in conditions that are okay for storing books over a long period of time. We're also having them move the collections to the temporary location, which is going to be located in St. Michael's. So, they're actually going to be also bringing the materials back once the, the construction is completed from both the temporary location and also that storage. So, it does sound like a lot of funds needed for this, but it is a specialized process. If you can imagine trying to keep about, oh, 20,000-plus library materials in, in strict Dewey Decimal Order. It's, it's quite a process, so.
So, it's for two moves and storage?
Yes, yep. And it's storage for about 15 months.
Having, having twice used the do-it-yourself approach to a much smaller 5,000 to 10,000-volume library, I can attest that that is not the way to do it and fully support the, the approach that's being proposed.
All right, any other?
No, but you're excited that you're getting to the point, that you're moving everything.
Yeah, we are, and we're looking at, I think, late October for that move.
Okay, great. Good.
Just, just note bids are coming in on Thursday, so.
Yes. So, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. We always appreciate your support. Thanks.
Yeah.
So, next, counsel, I have a request from the Roads Department requesting council approval to purchase a tandem axle dump truck at a price of $310,301 and a single axle dump truck at the price of $224,243 from Beltway International LLC of Baltimore, Maryland, using a state of Maryland purchase order. Both trucks have stainless steel bodies and snow removal equipment. There are sufficient funds in the FY25 budget for these purchases as approved by counsel. I'll ask you for that one first before moving on.
Okay.
Motion to approve request.
Second. Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And the next somewhat related is from the Roads Department to utilize FY25 capital outlay funding for the purchase of a Swenson specialty cross conveyor. This piece of equipment is actually attached to the body of one of the dump trucks that I've just asked for. They're, they're requesting approval to, to purchase this piece of equipment, which will be attached from Moxley Truck Equipment in the amount of $15,095. Again, this is an add-on unit to be installed in tandem dump truck and will be helpful in doing shoulder work along roadways. There are sufficient funds in the FY25 budget for this purchase as council approved.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
The facilities maintenance department is requesting council approval to purchase a three-quarter ton truck utility body from Apple Ford in Columbia, Maryland in the amount of $60,900 by picking, piggybacking on a Baltimore County, Maryland contract. There are sufficient funds in the FY25 budget as approved by council.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
That completes the Roads Department anyway. So, Brian Moore will be quite happy that counsel approved those.
Yeah, yeah.
He'll be glad that I'm carrying that message back to him. We'll get him in here someday again.
Yeah.
Next, counsel, we have a request from Department of Planning and Zoning for council approval for the First Amendment to the MOU by and between the Midshore Community Foundation and Talbot County for the Bellevue Passage Museum. And Patrick, I think, can add some detail to this. Patrick?
Yes, thank you. So, in, I believe in February, council approved a memorandum of understanding with the Bellevue Passage Museum and Midshore Community Foundation. After the memorandum of understanding was approved, Midshore Community Foundation had some additional proposed revisions to the MOU, which are important, but they're not substantive and don't materially change the scope of what was agreed to. So, we've presented an amendment to that to incorporate their, their proposed changes for council's consideration.
Okay.
Motion to approve the revision of the MOU.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. The next item I have, I am requesting council approval to establish an internal working group to review county-owned properties to determine the best and highest use. The committee would be comprised of two council members, the county manager, the planning officer, the director of economic development and tourism, the director of facilities, and the director of information technology, as well as the Department of Public Works GIS manager.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesham?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. And now I have a, I would invite, let's see, Eric Johnson, Executive Director of the Veterans and Military Support Alliance, I believe, Lee Ellingson may be with us as well, and Chad Baker, State Commander of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, here to request Council's consideration for a letter of support for the establishment of a Veterans Treatment Court for District, District 3, which is comprised of Caroline, Cecil, Kent, Queen Anne's, and Talbot County. Greetings.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
On behalf of Eric Johnson, he's having some health issues.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes. I am Lee Ellingson, I'm the Deputy Director of the Veterans and Military Support Alliance, and we started on Queen Anne's County, but now serve the whole eastern shore.
My name's Chad Baker, I'm the Eastern Shore Commander of the Military Order Purple Heart of only combat winged veterans, and I'm also the State Commander of just the combat veterans.
That's great.
I'm also locally a Veteran Service Officer for Talbot, so, for the VFW in Eastern-
I got you, great, that's great.
So, I'm going to presume that you have some familiarity with the, what a Veterans Treatment Court is. I can tell you that the first one was established in 2008 in Buffalo by Judge Robert Russell, who was the presiding judge for a mental health and a drug treatment court, and noticed that he was encountering a lot of veterans in those two courts, so decided to establish a Veterans Court, Treatment Court at that time. Nationally, there are more than 625 Veterans Courts in the U.S. Maryland has five courts covering nine counties, and what we're proposing is a regional court for the five counties in District 3. The advantage of a regional, of a regional court is that we can make the most efficient use and share funds as well as veteran resources. There, in order to establish the need for a Veterans Court, what many courts have done is to run, ask defendants as they come, include the question, "Have you served?", and that will help identify veterans. They aren't always immediately identified. And then Chad can tell you about his experience with them.
So currently, I have a few friends that live up in Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Currently, I have a few friends that are up in Pennsylvania that actually have been through a Veterans Court, and I will say, the, once they go through the Veterans Court, the recidivism rate is very, very low. The reason is because the local surrounding veteran organizations, as VAMSA and other organizations that we have on the eastern shore, they come and they basically help that individual either get drug and alcohol help, they help them with mental health, there's, I mean, there's just so many things that we can bring to bear for the veteran that's, that's being distraught by whatever's going on in his life, and I would, I would probably say that most of the time, a veteran, when he's going through court, he's going through a lot more than the average person, just because of stuff that, that he or she has seen. So what I try to do is I try to give the best advice to the court, lawyers, mental health professionals. Right now, we have VAMSA, they're actually helping mental health professionals and lawyers and everybody else learn what it is that we need help with. Because right now, even the mental health professionals up here today, they didn't say one thing about veterans, but that's the issue, is that we have a lot of veterans on the eastern shore, and they're not getting seen and proper help because we have to go all the way to Baltimore to get seen. So that's one of the reasons for the Veteran Court, but the Pennsylvania Court is just, I mean, it's amazing, if you just actually get to go and see it once, it's one of the best things you can see, because they, they basically bring the whole county to bear to make sure that veteran gets what he needs.
Okay.
Yeah, informally, we are working with the judge with two veterans, we developed an accountability plan, and I want to assure you that the accountability plan is probably more difficult than just sitting in jail, and takes more time than if they were just to serve their sentence.
Okay, well, that's great. Discussion?
Well, I, I know that, that you've reached out for support with the local veterans groups and appreciate your work in, in doing that, and if, if nothing else, to, to raise this awareness, but we've also seen some support, expressions of support coming from that direction. I certainly am familiar with our problem-solving court here, our equivalent of our, our drug court, probably the nearest analog to what this does, although I understand that the Veterans Court really has a broader charge than that, and I've been impressed with the wraparound services that are offered, and, and the, the really great successes that come from what they call graduation, which is really release from probation for these, for the graduates of the program. We've seen, we've seen the effectiveness of that, and I certainly look forward to your success in making this available to, to veterans in this, in this five-county area. Thank you very much for taking the initiative to do this.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, having been married to a Vietnam veteran, and having been a defense attorney and a public defender, I see the, the intense need for this, and I'm glad that you're stepping forward and proposing it, because we need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I echo with my, what my colleague said, I have a vet at home, and I do know that the services are, you know, rare and far and in between. Coming back from Afghanistan, I know that he struggled to find services, so thank you for the hard work and dedication that you're committing to this, and happy to agree to providing the letter of support.
Thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll move for the letter.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesham?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, there you go, guys, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you. And finally, Council, I just have an announcement to make, we would like to invite the public to attend the September 11th ceremony to be held at 8:30 AM tomorrow at the intersection of West and Dover Street. And I just wrote a little thing that I want to read you that I, I thought up a moment ago. It's a day not only to remember those who lost their lives on that frightly, fright, frightful day, but to also remember the unity, kindness, and pride that followed, and that through ceremonies such as these each year, community by community, we can promote a similar unity, which is certainly a worthy endeavor. So hopefully, a lot of people will come out and join our first responders just to remember that day, September 11th.
Yep, okay. Thank you, Mr. Stamp, I appreciate that.
Please, your County Manager Report.
Okay, great, good job. Okay. Do we have, we got, we got, nobody?
Nobody.
Nobody? Okay, okay, good. All right, so now we've got Council comments, we'll start off with Mr. Step.
Two quick ones here, so, well, maybe not so quick, but this month is, everyone probably knows or does not know, is National Preparedness Month, so, you know, we have a lot of situations that can arise here in Talbot County, whether that be, you know, floods, hurricanes, even tornadoes, so just urging everyone to, you know, be Talbot-ready, that's our slogan here in, in Talbot County. Our Department of Emergency Services, three steps to prepare. Step number one, know your risks. Step number two, make an emergency plan and build a kit. Step number three, put your plan in action when the time is right. We've mentioned this before, but wanted to reiterate this again, we do have reverse 911 services here where, you know, folks will call and reach out, you know, if there's an emergency in your area or affecting our area, you can find information on that at talbotalerts.com. Secondly, and Clay just kind of kicked it off here, it's my second, second point, with tomorrow being the 23rd anniversary of a very sober day in our country, I just wanted to ask and encourage everyone in, in Talbot County to join myself in prayer, as well as many others in prayer, for those who lost loved ones on that fateful day, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Step. Mr. Lesham?
Two items. First, I've directed our legal staff to draft an administrative resolution to create a Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee for introduction on September 24th, as requested during our summer work session, ensuring that Council has input and advice on this subject from a breadth of points of view in the community. And following on Mr. Stamp's announcement about tomorrow's ceremony at 8:30 on the corner of West and Dover Streets for the 9/11 Remembrance Event, the event will be followed by a call for the community, community to participate in #IWillFor911Day. IWillFor911, #IWillFor911Day is an annual virtual volunteering, social media campaign organized by the nonprofit 9/11 Day, in which hundreds of employers, nonprofit schools, and other groups, along with millions of individuals pledge to do good deeds in observance of the national, of the 9/11 National Day of Service. For 9/11 Day, we ask you to perform one good deed in tribute. And I will, I've been prompted to show my pledge, I did not have enough warning to, to draw one up, I will be doing this, I promise, and invite you to do the same, to, to visit talbotcountymaryland.gov, talbotcountymd.gov/911dayofservice to share your good deed. Post on social media with the hashtag #IWillFor911Day. Pledge cards are also available outside this hall and will be available tomorrow at the Talbot County Free Library following the ceremony.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lesham.
I've got nothing.
Got nothing, got nothing.
Everybody said it.
Okay, exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Come out tomorrow.
Yep, and I will sort of wrap it up with, with the 911 ceremony. It means a lot to a lot of people, and it's a special day, and we all can say several things, that this day brought everybody together, and that's what it actually did. And I just get chills just thinking about it, actually. So, so really, that's what it's all about, it's about the memorance, it's about always remembering the people that were there, the people that passed away, and, you know, just remembering the firefighters and first responders and police, and, you know, you know, we always, it's one of those incidents where you always know where you were at. So togetherness, that's what the United States is all about, and not only that, it's the world, because it changed the world, is really what it did. And it really brought us together, and it brought us together in a good way, and that's really at the root of it, what we all have to think about, because we argue a lot, but at the end of the day, we all pulled everything together. So that's what everybody needs to remember, so, I'm just going to leave it with that, so.
The County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 24th, beginning at 5 o'clock PM. The Council will be convening an open session at 2:30 PM in the Bradley Meeting Room for our annual meeting with the Board President and Executive Director of the Maryland Association of Counties, and then adjourning into closed session as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved. Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesham?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot.